Like to call to eat, to order this meeting of the Monroe County Board of Commissioners. It's Wednesday, February 16th, 2022. And we will begin by noting that all three members of the Board of Commissioners are present. And we will have Commissioner Jones read our public statement, please.
We, Monroe County Board of Commissioners, renew our commitment to welcome and protect the rights of all people, regardless of age, race, color, creed, disability, sexual orientation, gender, gender identity, marital status, economic status, and national origin. And we affirm the right of every person to live peacefully and without fear. And we will fight and resist at every step discrimination and harmful policies, whatever their source. We also stand in support of our county public school systems, both RBB and MCCSC.
Thank you so much. And next on our agenda, Department updates. Ms. Cottle from the Health Department, good morning.
Good morning. Data today coming in continues to indicate a downward trend. So even though Monroe County does remain in a red advisory this week, our numbers are coming down. So I just want to share a little bit of that with you locally and as a state. The state as a whole is seeing dramatic drop in cases. Five counties do still have positivity rates that are over 30%, but now there are 15 counties that have fallen below 15%. So that's definitely good news. This week, we are at 18% positivity and our cases per 100,000 are just over 300. Our rolling day average of cases is hovering around the, the high 50s, around 57, and that is down from 232 just two weeks ago. So a big, big change that we're watching. Remember that when we look at that metrics map on, and all of those colors, that there is a process that you have to be in a lower metrics color or level two weeks before you actually change colors. That with these changes with Omicron and these fast decreases, I don't know if the state will make a change regarding that or not, but just to let people know that moving, changing those colors is much slower going down than it is coming up. Symptomatic testing and positivity rates are also showing decreases. And as a district, our hospital numbers are slowing. Those are leveling off and starting to decline. So no steep drop, but we are seeing improvements. Our department is working on a set of recommendations that the board will be voting on on March 3rd, when the, we anticipate that the governor's order is likely to expire on the 4th, which would mean that our local regulation would expire. I do want to emphasize that ending the regulation does not change the behaviors that are needed from all of us in order to continue these improvements and to get out of this pandemic and to even find that new normalization of how we live with this infection. So maintaining masks, distancing, cleaning, staying home when you're sick, all those things continue, regulation or not. Testing is available. Local, the local gravity site will be changing their hours. They will stop Saturday hours and they will instead add an evening. I believe it's going to be Thursday evenings. We talked with them and they reported they were doing very few tests on Saturdays. So the cost benefit just was not prudent to have that open on Saturdays, but they did, are going to add some evening hours. The Indianapolis Motor Speedway has reduced their hours. Tuesday and Thursdays, the hours are four to eight. And then Wednesday, Friday, and Saturday, I believe those are staying the same. They are eight to four, and that site is open through the 26th of this month. Home tests are certainly more available and you can visit the FDA website for a full list of approved tests. If you want to make sure that what you're seeing on a shelf is approved, you may do that. You, if you haven't ordered your free test yet, you can do that with covidtests.gov. So I'd encourage you to do that as well. If you've been watching the vaccine process, you already know that Pfizer is extending its rolling submission to the FDA to include six month to four year olds, so that it includes the third dose data. So while we had anticipated that might be reviewed and voted on this month, that isn't going to come until at least April. So that's the expectation as of right now. So with all of this guidance changes, information changes, we continue to monitor that. We'll share those things and adapt as information changes. I do want to encourage everybody to remember that vaccine is still available. It's available at our public health clinic, at pharmacies, through your providers, at mobile clinics across the state. And it's not too late to start your vaccination or to get your booster. And it is very important for all of us to stay up to date with all of our vaccinations. So I would encourage everybody to take a look if you, on, at your own vaccinations, are you up to date on all of them? Are your children up to date on all of them? This pandemic has created hardships for people to stay current with their children and their childhood immunizations. And we're working very hard to make sure that people catch up and get those vaccinations. Thank you.
All right, thank you so much, Ms. Cottle, as always. Comments, questions, Commissioner Giffens?
No, there's always just so much to digest with what we hear. Thank you.
Commissioner Jones?
Well, it's, it's very nice to see positive trends. I just hope they continue that way.
Absolutely. Appreciate all of your hard work and your staff and board and everyone in this community who's done their part. Keeping, staying masked and getting vaccinated is really important still. It doesn't change. Yeah, thank you so much. We appreciate you. All right. Next, we have on our agenda, well, let's first see if there's any other departments that have an update to offer. Let us know. Let's see any. So with that, we'll move on to the next agenda item, which is public comment. Public comment on our agenda is reserved for items that are not elsewhere on our agenda. Each commenter is limited to three minutes, just as they will be during our agenda item, public comment periods. And at 2 minutes and 30 seconds, you will hear a tone. Thank you so much. When you hear that tone, that means you have 30 seconds to complete your thoughts. Anybody, if anybody has public comment for us, raise your hand on the Zoom screen. I don't see any phone calls coming in. Okay, I don't see any. So with, oh, we do have one. Donovan Garlets from the Election Board. Please verify that it's you and give us your comment.
Hi, Donovan Garlets, Monroe County Resident Election Board. I would just like to remind the commissioners that it seems we have this handhold on the governor's mandate or the governor's health order for when we are proposing to lift the countywide mask mandate and countywide bar on meeting in person. I would like to remind the commissioners that that health order says nothing that we must do what we're doing. I won't speak to the masks, other than to say, I'm not sure what data we're following, because it's no different than the rest of the 91 counties in the state that aren't Monroe County in terms of what we do. And as for the allowance to meet in person, I request again that you guys lift that, regardless of what the governor has in his health order, because it is allowed, as we are shown by the other, other counties except us in the state. And I would love to be able to meet in person and hope that you guys reconsider. Thank you.
Thank you. One of the things that we are unable to track when we do all of this work, and it's been a long couple of years, is we've been unable to track how many lives have been saved and, and how many illnesses prevented by our policies. And I'm really proud of Monroe County government and what we've done in our health board and our, our health department. So I just want to thank them again for protecting us and giving us that guidance that we need. So thank you. All right, next item, please.
I move approval of the minutes from February 9th, 2022. Second.
Do you have a motion and a second? Any comments, edits?
I believe that Ms. Freeman was in the process of correcting the scrimmers error. So hopefully that's been taken care of.
Thank you so much. Mr. Cockrell, will you please call the roll on approval of minutes for February 9th, 2022?
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Giffens?
Yes.
Go.
Yes.
Motion is approved, three to zero.
Thank you so much. Next item, please.
Move approval of the claims stock accounts payable February 16th, 2022. Second.
We have a motion and a second. And we have Mr. Miller here to tell us all about it. Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. The total for claims was $4,561,973.88. $3,604,857.34 was for local income tax distribution. And of that amount, $752,140.15 was specifically for public safety, local income tax distribution. $242,827.50 was for the city of Bloomington for public safety answering point, local income tax for central dispatch. $152,682.54 was for Axon Enterprise, Inc. For body cams for our sheriff, jail, animal control, and reserve officers, as well as camera systems for the sheriff department interview room. And finally, $85,479.20 was from Monroe County Treasurer for February full-time self-insurance, as far as the large item, AP claim items are concerned.
Right, great, you so much, Mr. Miller. We appreciate you. Comments, questions, Commissioner Giffens?
No.
Commissioner Jones?
No, I don't.
Okay. Is there any public comment on this item? Please raise your hand on the Zoom screen if you wish to comment on this item. Commenters, again, will be limited to three minutes. Seeing none. Mr. Cockrell, will you please call the roll on approval of claims stock accounts payable February 16th, 2022?
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Giffens?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Motion is approved, three to zero.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, we will move on to new business, please.
Yes, I move approval of Midwest Presort agreements, fund name reassessment, fund number 1224, in an amount not to exceed $39,090.87. Second.
We have a motion and we have a second. And I would ask that we revise this amount to $41,000 as a not to exceed amount. Because one of the items is an estimate for postage, and that's, but that's always variable. So I'm going to go ahead and make a motion that we revise the amount to not to exceed $41,000. Okay, we have a motion and we have a second. Any comments or questions from my colleagues? Any public comment on this amendment? Raise your hand on the Zoom screen, please. Mr. Cockrell, will you please call the roll on amending the motion?
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Giffens?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
The motion is approved.
Great, thank you so much. And now we turn to our assessor, Ms. Sharp. Good morning. Oh, you are muted.
I'm just getting ready to turn you off. You approved it, so I thought, bye. Thank you much. This is, you've got all of this. We've been doing this for, I don't know how many years. This is postage to mail all of our forms for the first part of this year. We started, oh, Friday. We mailed out the Form 1, which is our mobile home, personal property forms to all the mobile home people that live in mobile home parks on personal property. That was about a little over 1,000. 1,700, about 1,700 forms that go to these, these people. So they can see their new assessment and have the opportunity to appeal to us if they think it is incorrect. And then Midwest picks, we do all of the in-house work, and then Midwest Presort out of Indianapolis comes down and picks it up and mails it for us. And we get a really good deal. It's always less than if I had to do it, mail it with individual stamps or take it to the post office. And then what we're getting ready to do now will be the, all the 2022 personal, business personal property forms that we send to everybody, which we have to do. We have to notify people that they have to file these forms. We take it a little bit step further. It doesn't, doesn't cost us that much more and doesn't hurt us. And I know the public is very grateful for this. We send them the forms. They're not pre-filled out. They still have to do that, but it just cuts a little bit of work for the public to do, because every year they forget they're supposed to do this. And, and everybody that has a home office business, or any business, you're supposed to file with our office this time of the year. And this year, the state is actually raising the, the bottom line from 40,000 to 80,000. So if you have business personal property reporting, and remember, this is self-reporting. They report it. It's a self-assessment. Under 80,000, you will not have any taxes due at all, but you still have to file the form with us, which is very kind of silly, I think, but no one listens to, to the assessors. I understand the reason for it, but at 80,000, it's going to wipe out half of our filings anyway. But unfortunately, if they do not file, they get penalized. $25 plus interest and everything else. And, you know, it's not their fault. They don't even realize it. They think, hey, why do I have to do this? It's under, this year, 80,000. Actually, the legislators were going to try to make it 250,000, but that got voted down, thank you very much, last week, Monday, I can't remember. This week has gone by so fast. It was either Monday or last Thursday. Finally, they took that out of there. The governor wanted that higher amount. And, you know, it's death by a thousand cuts for property taxes. We just keep cutting it and cutting it. And you know what happens? The more we take from this side, the more this side has to pay, because there's a bottom line of what we have to fund. And I sent you all the, the, I'll see Analytics and Larry DeBoer's thing about a week ago. The AIC contracted with Larry DeBoer and Policy Analytics to actually look at business personal property. And the shift over the last few years of business personal property shift to the homeowners tremendously on all of us, we're all homeowners, that we are paying more in, in property tax. We used to have a pretty, it was a, it was very even between personal, between business property and real property. We all carried the burden, but Indiana has shifted it now into the residential area. I don't know what's going to happen. My personal feeling, and I think a lot of assessors will agree with this, let's just do away with it. Now, that sounds really great. We can't do away with, I think it's, it's approximately a billion dollars of taxes, and we have to be made whole for that. So if the state would make us whole, then that would solve the problem with business personal property for the legislators, but they'll never make us whole. So that's just a little aside there, and I think you all understand it, but I wish the public understood a little bit better. Only the big guys, I mean, at $80,000, I'm just looking around the square. There's not a soul around here that's paying any business personal property. They're paying a lot of other taxes, but business PP is not one of them, but they still have to file. And we still have to do all of the, the work in here, which is a tremendous amount of handling files. So that's what the, the other mailing is for. And then, of course, the big mailing that was coming up are my Form 11s that I have to have out by May 1st, which is the notice of assessment for every piece of property in Monroe County. I send it out every year I have to. That starts the whole year for appeals again. And that's the, the big thing. And that is what we always just sort of, we're never really sure exactly how much all that's going to be, depending on how much. I always send a letter with all of the filings. But that's what all of this is for. And I come to you guys every year for the same. And Midwest Presort, Lisa's staying across from me, my deputy. Midwest has been doing this for approximately about 10 years. And they do it for a lot of companies. I'm not sure. I think they might even do it for Jessica now. Do they? They don't, Jessica doesn't use them. But good company, work with the assessors very well, and they've been a real help. So I went on longer than you probably wanted to hear all of this, but I appreciate you guys doing this.
We appreciate the explanation for the public. Thank you so much. Comments, questions, Commissioner Giffens?
Yeah, how do we, how do we push back on some of these things?
Okay. Okay, we're not allowed to talk politics, okay, Penny? But with that being said, we've been pushing back for a lot of years, and we're still pushing back. Assessors Association, there's a lot of good stuff that comes out. I'm not, I'm not saying, but, that there isn't. But the property tax system is the number one issue with legislators, because it resonates with every single homeowner and business owner in the state of Indiana. And all it takes is one irate property tax owner to get to a legislator. And that legislator just like, oh my God, I'll lose a vote if I don't get a bill. No matter how bad it is, let's throw it out there, and they stick. And I'm being very, I'm being very honest with you, and I know I'm on the whole, of course, I stand up there to the legislators and say the same thing. Too much politics into what we all do, and this job doesn't, my job does not, should not be political. We have rules and regulations. We have to get the job done. People don't like it, but as long as I can prove to everybody that we're fair and equitable, and even if you disagree with that, there's mechanisms out there. But just because you don't like your assessment and you know somebody in the legislature, and there's, there's horrible bills that we fight down every single year. We're still fighting on the dark box, still fighting on the dark box. We won a little bit, it's still out there. You know, how long has that been? 20 years? And it's always been brought up. I don't know. It just, it gets a little frustrating, but we keep doing it. And you had a good question. We fight back. We, we get, we, we're the people that, that know what we're doing. We know who to talk to, and most of the times, they kind of listen, but, you know, there's a lot of them up there. So, good question.
That was a good question. Commissioner Jones, comments, questions?
I just want to thank you for your thorough explanation of how property taxes work. I think lots of people get pretty confused over all the different taxes and how they change and how it affects people's lives. So I think a good explanation is always appreciated.
Thanks, Lee, very much.
Yeah, I do appreciate the explanation. And even if you are a renter in the community, you are helping to pay property taxes. So it does impact everyone, as, as our assessor noted. So thank you for that, Ms. Sharp. I appreciate you. Let's see if there's any public comment on this item. Please raise your hand on the Zoom screen. Okay, seeing none. Mr. Cockrell, will you please call the roll on the amended motion for the Midwest Presort agreements?
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Giffens?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Motion is approved, three to zero.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you. All right, next item, please.
Move to approve LexisNexis Agreement Renewal, Fund Name, Misdemeanor, Fund Number 1175-31390-000, in an amount of $401 per month.
Second. We have a motion and we have a second. I don't know which you will be talking about this today. We have Ms. Pretty and Mr. Cockrell here.
Either one.
I'm, Sam called me because he was unable to make it. So Commander Crowe wanted me to explain that this is a three-year agreement at $401 per month. It is to provide the access for the people in the jail to be able to do legal research. And I believe that's a constitutional right. So I think we should, really should approve this and let them continue to figure things out.
Excellent, thank you. And thank you, Ms. Pretty, for being on standby. Thank you so much. Comments, questions, Commissioner Giffens?
No, I appreciate the fact that this is being done.
Commissioner Jones?
Yeah, I just think this is very valuable to the people who are in jail. And as Mr. Cockrell said, it is a constitutional requirement. So it's a good idea to do it.
Absolutely. All right, let's see if there's any public comment on this item. Raise your hand on the Zoom screen. Okay, seeing none. Mr. Cockrell, will you please call the roll on the LexisNexis Agreement Renewal?
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Giffens?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Motion is approved, three to zero.
Right, thank you so much. Next item, please.
Move approval of the Fiscal Year 2021 Emergency Management Performance Grant, Fund Name, County General, Fund Number 1,000, in an amount of $53,179. Second.
We have a motion and a second, and we have our Emergency Management Director, Ms. Petroline, joining us. Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners and people of Monroe County. I find it strange that the last time I was here, I was talking about a winter storm, and then today it's going to be 60 degrees. So I hope everyone takes the opportunity to go frolic in the nice weather and not be blown away by the wind. But today, I am coming forward to you with our Emergency Management Performance Grants, and as we finally call it, the EMPG. This is our annual grant that we apply for and hopefully receive from the Indiana Department of Homeland Security that gives us a reimbursement of approximately 50% of our salaries for the director and the deputy director. So this particular grant is for the calendar year of 2021, and that amount comes to $53,179. And I am here to ask for your signature of approval for the grant agreement.
Thank you so much. Comments, questions, Commissioner Giffens?
No, it's nice to have the state funding some of these things.
Great.
Yeah. Commissioner Jones?
I, I remember seeing this for a number of years, and it's great that we always get the grant.
Greed up.
Absolutely, and hopefully we won't have any of those severe storms that they've talked about south of us. But this next weather system is, could be a bit, a bit much. So we appreciate that you're, that we have you and your staff and providing this great service, this invaluable service to Monroe County residents. And we're glad that the state assists us with this, so.
Thank you.
And let's see if there's any public comment on this item. Raise your hand on the Zoom screen. Okay, seeing none. Mr. Cockrell, will you please call the role on the approval of the fiscal year twenty twenty-one Emergency Management Performance Grant?
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Giffens?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Motion is approved, three to zero.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Have a great day.
You too. All right. Next item, please.
I have a question. Would you like to have items D, E, F, and G all in one motion, since they are all with the same company?
We could do that.
Okay.
It's a good idea.
I move to approve ratification of BTEC LLC Fire Alarm System with fund number to be determined in the amounts of four thousand, fifty-two dollars, twenty-three cents, one thousand, two hundred, six dollars and twenty-one cents, twenty-five hundred dollars, and seven thousand, six hundred, thirty-seven dollars and seventy-seven cents.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second, and we have Mr. Crowe here to tell us all about these three, these four items for three oh two South Walnut. Good morning.
Good morning, everyone. These are all agreements with BTEC for the new elections operations site at three oh two South Walnut. This will implement fire alarm systems that needed to be upgraded due to changes in occupancy and use of the building that's required by code. This also covers the implementation of security cameras around the building. The other part of the agreement is the wiring portion of that agreement that is always separate, providing infrastructure. And the last item on there is the motion sensors and detectors placed around the building for security, door alarms, window alarms.
Excellent. Thank you so much. Comments, questions, Commissioner Giffens?
Oh, I'm really happy that this location was settled on for early voting for both the primary and the the general election. It's going to allow for a lot more people to be processed at any given time. The parking is good. It's right across the street from the bus terminal. So I'm I'm really pleased that this is happening, and I thank Mr. Crowe for making sure all the extra things happen in a very timely manner.
Absolutely. I did a walkthrough inspection with our Building Commissioner Bobby LaRue so that he could go through and we could make sure that we had every aspect of this covered to get us up in code compliance and make it accessible for the public.
Yeah, great. Comments, questions, Commissioner Jones?
I just want to thank you for moving so quickly on this. Early voting is coming up really awfully soon, and you haven't been given much time to get this building ready. But it will be a great location, and thank you for taking it on.
Yeah, thank you. Yes, thank you for being nimble and agile. It's it's taken quite a bit, and I think, you know, it looks like, oh, it's four items. It's no big deal. But a lot went into this to set this up and make sure that everything is covered. And so we we do thank you for for your focus on this and getting this done. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Let's let's see if there's any public comment on this item. Raise your hand on the Zoom screen. Okay. All right, seeing none. Mr. Cockrell, will you please call the role on the four items? Ratification of BTEC Agreement for the Fire Alarm System, the Security Agreement, the Wiring Agreement, and the Camera Agreement.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Giffens?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Motion is approved, three to zero.
Thank you.
Have a good day.
You as well. All right, next item, please.
Move to approve National CineMedia CineMedia, sorry, LLC Agreement Renewal. Fund name, health, fund number eleven fifty-nine, in an amount not to exceed twenty thousand dollars.
Second.
Right, we have a motion and we have a second. Ms. Cockrell, thank you for staying with us. Tell us all about it, please.
Yeah, so we have had some promotional money in our health fund budget now for a couple of years. And much of that is put towards the movie, the CineMedia ads. So people can click on them even if they're not at the movie. They're on the screen if you go to the movies. Certainly, we have done ads that have ranged from fighting stigma to hand washing. We've certainly been focused on vaccinations and COVID in the past. And this is a renewal to go forward with the contract for another series. And the the contractor, the agreement before you is for six thousand dollars. But we do have in our budget to do these throughout the year for a total of up to twenty thousand dollars.
Excellent. Right, thank you so much. Comments, questions, Commissioner Giffens?
No, we've this is similar to what we've seen on a regular basis. So I hope I hope that the people in the public are paying attention to some of the things.
Yeah, we will be updating what what's going on. But again, trying to get everybody up to date on their vaccines regardless of of what they are is a big focus right now.
Yeah, absolutely. Commissioner Jones?
Yeah, we've, as Commissioner Giffens said, we've seen this a number of times, I believe, also with several other departments in the county. And it is a very good way for government to get messages out to the public and help them know about the things they really need to know.
Absolutely. It's great work. All right, let's see if there's any public comment on this item. Raise your hand on the Zoom screen, please. Okay, seeing none. Mr. Cockrell, will you please call the role on the National CineMedia Agreement Renewal?
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Giffens?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Motion is approved, three to zero.
Thank you very much.
Great, thank you. All right. Next item, please.
Move approval of a contract with EMB paving LLC Agreement for Cars Farm Greenway South Segment Gate and Excavation. Fund name, twenty seventeen GO bond, fund number forty-eight, ten dash forty-seven, one fifty-one, in an amount not to exceed four thousand, two hundred dollars.
Second.
We have a motion and we have a second, and we have Ms. Whitmer here, head of our Perks Department, to tell us all about it. Good morning.
Good morning. I'm also on the next agenda item, which will probably explain this a little better. DNR, out of the two million dollar grant, they decided that a farm gate and excavating under one of our bridges under the Cars Farm Greenway will not be eligible for the NLT grant. Our department highly recommends that we we install this gate to keep farm animals from wandering onto the trail or people wandering into a pasture. We also need to excavate under a bridge so we can keep the farm animals going in the a good direction under the a trail and not over the trail.
Excellent. Thank you so much. Comments, questions, Commissioner Giffens?
No, just thank you for staying on top of this. It's a little crazy sometimes what what changes the state wants. Yeah.
Commissioner Jones?
It's too bad the DNR made this decision. It's hard to understand why these wouldn't be considered to be extremely important. But thank you for bringing it to us because it is important.
It is, and I try not to argue with DNR. They've been very good to us.
Yeah, yeah. I think about the size of the grant. This is not a huge issue, so I'm glad you've taken care of it. Let's see if there's any public comment on this item. Seeing none. Mr. Cockrell, will you please call the role on the EMB paving LLC Agreement for Cars Farm Greenway South Segment Gate and Excavation?
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Giffens?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Motion is approved, three to zero.
Right, next item, please.
Move to approve EMB paving LLC Change Order Number One, Cars Farm Greenway South Segment. Fund name, next level trails, fund number nine seven zero, nine one zero seven dash three zero 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 six dash zero 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 in an amount of forty thousand dollars.
Second.
We have a motion and we have a second. All right, connect the dots for us, if you would, please.
Excellent. This is a minus forty thousand dollars. I'm not asking for additional appropriation. Well, no, it's not on your.
It is, and I it's but it's real teenage. They should, you know, my my poor old eyes, sorry.
It's a deduction. And what it is is that we have to take off the delete the excavation waterway under the bridge and to take out the farm fence gate that DNR does not want. Then we asked DNR to add another gate just down the way. They like that gate, so that's grant eligible. I don't understand, but I'm not going to argue. And then Monroe County Engineer, NVS Engineering, recommended to take out something to do with the bridge and how the pilings are installed. It is to end dot standards, and the heaviest thing we'll have on there is a sheriff's Polaris. No trucks, no cars, no vehicles. So Paul Satterley said this is not not needed.
Awesome. Great. Thank you so much. Comments, questions, Commissioner Giffens?
It's always nice to save money.
It is. DNR likes that, too.
Yeah.
I just thought we will be coming back. We we found a culvert in one of the sections. So we'll be coming back and asking DNR if they would make that grant eligible. And if it is, then we'll be responsible for thirty percent of the cost. They said seventy percent. So I'll be coming back for that change order, hopefully, in a week or two.
Okay, great. Thank you. Commissioner Jones?
I'm just pleased to see this moving forward and look forward to its completion.
We all are.
But let's see if there's any public comment on this item. Raise your hand on the Zoom screen. Right, seeing none. We'll come back for a vote. Mr. Cockrell, will you please call the role on the EMB paving LLC Change Order Number One, Cars Farm Greenway South Segment?
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Giffens?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Motion is approved, three to zero.
Thank you so much. Look forward to seeing you again soon. All right, next item, please.
Move to amend move to approve Amendment Number Two to the Monroe County American Rescue Plan Act Fund, known as ARPA.
Second.
We have a motion and we have a second. Mr. Cockrell, will you please tell us about?
Yes, as we continue to look at the use of those federal funds. We are, this amendment is to add number five to the section that priorities are proposed to be funded. And that section five is the use of funding to improve public infrastructure to support the construction of the brine system at the Highway Garage. The brine system will not only promote public safety, but is shown to reduce harmful runoff caused by our current winter weather implementation systems and will and will have reduced pollutants in the stormwater system. So this is to help fund that project that the state gave us some money for at the when they were constructing the interstate and to provide the brine system and the building itself. So this would allow ARPA funding to be used for that. I believe this will be on the county council's agenda next Tuesday for potential funding of it.
Great, thank you so much. Comments, questions, Commissioner Giffens?
No, I I'm really anxious to have the brine system all up and running.
Commissioner Jones?
I I agree with Commissioner Giffens, and I believe this project just keeps on getting a little bit more expensive all the time.
Yeah, for sure. All right, excellent. Let's see if there's any public comment on this item. Seeing none. Mr. Cockrell, will you please call the role on Amendment Number Two to the Monroe County American Rescue Plan Act Fund?
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Giffens?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Motion is approved, three to zero.
All right, thank you, and next item, please.
Move to approve Resolution twenty twenty-two dash oh four, an update to Monroe County Code.
We have a motion. Can we eat a second?
Sorry, I'm sorry. I had second to it.
Okay, I'm sorry. I must not have heard you. Thank you so much.
Sorry.
I looked down for a second on my paper. All right, we have a motion and a second. Tell us all about it, please, Mr. Cockrell.
Well, this is a fairly simple routine housekeeping matter. We try to do this twice a year where we take all the changes to the code that have been already approved at meetings, and we update our code. Then we bring it back to you guys for a vote for that code update. So then we can get it out to all the areas of the county that receive copies of it, such as the library. This is just updating the code to reflect what has happened in the last six months or so.
Hey, thank you so much. Comments, questions, Commissioner Giffens?
No, it was presented in our packet, you know, very fully, so I appreciate that.
Commissioner Jones?
Yeah, this is just pretty routine.
All right. And I don't have any comments. Let's see if there's any public comment. Raise your hand on the Zoom screen, please. Okay, seeing none. Will you please call the role, Mr. Cockrell, on Resolution twenty twenty-two dash zero four?
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Giffens?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Motion is approved, three to zero.
Right, thank you so much. All right, we don't have any appointments today. I just want to include a couple of announcements if I can, just a big thank you again to TSD for all their hard work and getting us through our meetings every week and all of our boards and commissions meetings as well. And we're moving into, we believe, hybrid meetings starting in March. So I know they're going to be ready for us, and I know there's a lot of work that goes into that, so thanks in advance for that. There are a couple of blood drives scheduled for March, March twenty-ninth, which is a Tuesday from ten to three. March thirtieth, which is a Wednesday from one to six. Both of these will be held at Ivy Tech. Please go to redcross.org to make your appointment, and thank you to all of our donors. A note as well that for those who have suffered suffered from financial hardship as a result of the COVID nineteen pandemic and are struggling to pay for basic necessities, please contact your township trustee. Every county resident, whether they live in the town, city, or neither, is a resident of a township. You can find your township trustee by calling two one one or going to IN two one one dot org. And that Township Assistance Fund is has over two hundred thousand dollars so far in it. So it's a it's a big fund, and we're pleased to be able to help our residents weather this storm. Also, we do have some openings on some boards and commissions, so we encourage residents to apply. Go to CO-monroe.in.us and click on Boards and Commissions, find out information about each one, and also to apply. And it's just a good time of year to remind everyone as well that it's a good idea to sign up for our Resident Alert System, especially as we're entering into severe weather season for the spring. It's nice to think about spring. Just go to CO-monroe.in.us and click on the megaphone on the homepage and sign up. It's free. Provides weather alerts, severe storm warnings, but also information from our Health Department and from our Highway Department if we have a late winter, early spring storm, which we hope we don't. So with that, let's see if my colleagues have anything they wish to add. All right, so we do have some items on our work session agenda, so can we come back at eleven oh five? Does that work for both of you?
Sure.
Great. All right, so we are going to go ahead and adjourn this regular meeting, and we'll come back at eleven oh five for our work session. Everyone, please get vaccinated. Thank you.